I'm going to call this special meeting of the Stratford Board of Education to order at 7:23. Tonight is March 1st, 2023. I am Andrea Cochran, Board Chair. We do have a quorum this morning, and before we get going, I would like to welcome the 10th cohort of parents C. For those who are not aware, this is an amazing parent leadership class that several of us up here in our house have, Ms. Binnell, myself, and Ms. Cupe. And so we applaud the dedication of all of our new cohort members, and we thank you guys for being here tonight, and we're so excited to have you be a part of our educational community, and so welcome and join. I hope we... And now I will ask Mrs. Wiltie to lead us in the invocation of pledge, please. Please stand.
May we see to you, Almighty God, to bless this meeting of the Board of Education, so guide and rule over our hearts and minds that all our deliberations and decisions may be in accordance with your will and lead to the advancement and welfare of the community of Stratford for whom we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to this God from the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one visible, benevolent, and just as well.
Thank you very much. May be seated. Thank you, Mrs. Wiltie. And if you would, I would like to take a moment tonight and have a moment of silence to remember Mr. Joseph Prudo. He gave a lot to the Stratford community, and notably, he served as a board member for three years, and he was also the coach of the Stratford High School Women's Basketball Team and the Men's Baseball Team for some time. So if you would, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We'll begin tonight with our student representatives' report from Binnell High School, Tara Etienne.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tara Etienne, and it is a pleasure to be addressing you this evening. We are thrilled to announce that VHS senior Riley Kukemenez has been selected as the 2023 Connecticut Association of Schools Heart of the Arts recipient. This award recognizes a student involved in high school performing or visual arts program who exemplified the core values of education-based activities: integrity, citizenship, courage, good character, and who have demonstrated exemplary heart, overcome adversity, and exceeded normal expectations in assisting others within the school community. Riley is an integral member of our school's marching band, concert band, and indoor drumline. She also played a key role in the filming of Disney's Chain Can Dunk last fall. Riley will be recognized as the CAS Arts Awards banquet at the Aqua Turf Club in April. On February 10th, the men of color and living in color leadership groups were visited by CAS and CIAC. CAS and CIAC sat in on a MLC meeting and presented the members with the book entitled "Start with Why" by Simon Sinek. On February 7th, the MLC was visited by attorney Donald Smart. They had a lively discussion about law and advocacy. MLC was recognized by the NAACP this past weekend. LNC held its second annual Valentine's Day fundraising event. They collected money and distributed flowers and candy to students throughout the school. LNC members proudly presented flowers and candy to a number of VHS students, I mean teachers. On February 15th, we had our third annual Black Alumni Panel, which went very well. Throughout the month of February, school counselors at VHS and across the district have been meeting with students individually. Counselors review credits, help students choose classes that are based upon student interest and discuss future career post-secondary options. This is a wonderful chance for counselors to check in with all students on their caseloads. These individual meetings are meaningful for both counselors and students alike. Counselors will soon be meeting with students in the junior class in small groups to discuss post-secondary planning. These sessions will be held in March and April. Additionally, VHS and SHS counselors continue to offer Fast Food Support to families. Two sessions were held on February 2nd and February 27th to assist families in completing the Fast Food application. VHS was highlighted in the Fast Food Challenge Newsletter for being a school that has met 80% of their goal. There will be an upcoming recognition day for students who have completed this Fast Food this March. A special celebration will be held raffling off Apple AirPods. Counselors are beginning to prepare for upcoming AP and SAT testing this spring. SAT will be held on March 28th at VHS, and the AP testing window will begin in May. The band has recently returned from California, where they attended a private screening premiere of Chain Can Dunk in the Walt Disney Theater at the Walt Disney Studios in Burbank. This is the same theater that Snow White and other Disney classics had their first viewing. While in California, the band represented our schools and the town of Stratford as they led the Mickey's Cavalcade of Friends Parade Down Main Street, USA in the Magic Kingdom. It was an amazing experience, highlighted by a visit from the director of the film and all of the leading actors. On March 11th and April 1st, the band will host the annual Indoor Drumline and Indoor Color Guard Championships in the VHS gym. Stop on by to see some of the very best performers from all over Connecticut and New York, including our own amazing Color Guard and Drumline. We are currently in the thick of rehearsals for Mean Girls High School Edition for the Spring Musical. Please come out to the show, May 18th and 19th at 7:00 PM and May 20th at 2:00 PM. We also have a Chipotle fundraiser coming up this weekend at the Stratford Chipotle to help raise funds for the Spring Musical. On Saturday, March 4th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, please come support this group. All you need to do is show a digital copy or physical copy for us to get 33% of the proceeds. You can find the flyer on Instagram at Binnell Stage and at Binnell High School Choir. The Concert Choir and Select Choir recently sang "Lift Every Voice and Sing" at the Black Alumni Panel event two weeks ago. Thank you to Mr. Ramos for including us in this impactful event. They have, the Concert Choir and Select Choir have many fundraisers coming up in a support to purchase choir uniforms for starting this spring and for the future. They are selling spring flower buds online. There is a wide variety of colors and breeds of flowers. Please consider ordering these beautiful flowers. The choir receives 50% of the profits and all the flowers shipped directly to you. This is going on now through May 15th. Lastly, the choir is currently planning a trip to Lake Compound to compete against other choirs in the area. This is a great way for the students to be critiqued, compete, and end the year on a high note. We are looking forward to the concert on May 23rd at 6:00 PM. Please come support the students in the music department. Class of 2024 are selling tickets for their junior ring dance on March 10th. We are accepting canned goods at ticket sales to be donated to the Sterling House Food Pantry. Binnell 11th and 12th grade mentors went to Flood and Second Hill Lane on Tuesday, February 7th, for team-building activities. A select few Flood students will be joining our Black History Panel. Well, they already joined the panel. Interact Club has been busy volunteering with the YMCA at Second Hill Lane and Eli Whitney, Monday through Thursday after school. Students also volunteered at the Second Hill Lane School Dance and PTSA meetings. Women's Empowerment have been busy planning for their annual Women's Leadership Meet and Greet on March 30th, our field trip to the Harriet Beecher Stowe Center in Hartford, Connecticut on March 16th, and our Women's History Projects with Flood and Second Hill Lane in the beginning of March. Writing empowering letters to the 6th grade girls of Second Hill Lane and also creating small posters of prominent women in history with a short bio to display in the halls of Flood. Stephen Couson, Boy Swim, and Kiara Ballerow cheerleading were recognized as the February Athletes of the Month. Three student athletes signed their letters of intent last week to play college sports: Colin Bauer, Riviera University Lacrosse; Rohan Terrell, Tufts University Football; and Michael Troverelli, Central Connecticut State University Football. Samantha Coiman took second place in long jump in the Class L State Meet and will compete in state opens. Students in grades 9 through 12 interviewed for the four March steward positions offered again this year by Audubon CT. For most of these students, this was the first time that they had participated in a job interview. This opportunity helped them experience what they should do prior to a job interview, such as researching the job, thinking about the role in community, and dressing professionally. During the interviews, they learned how to communicate with the interviewers effectively, what the expectations are when collaborating with others, and what employers are looking for. The students are representing our community so well. Creative writing student Samantha Coiman recited her poem "Beautiful Brown Eyes" during our third annual Black Alumni Panel discussion. Binnell English teacher Ms. Allison Miller and Stratford High School teacher Ms. Jessica Teague and Humanity Department heads from both high schools are rewriting our current UConn ECE curriculum to align with UConn's new freshman writing course, Seminar in Studio and Academic Writing and Multimodal Composition. We continue to look for opportunities to provide students with access to and preparation for post-secondary education programs. Student Government is hard at work planning several events coming up in the next several weeks. Coming March 7th, we are hosting our second Community Blood Drive of the school year. We hope to repeat our success from November, having over 40 registrators for donations. Finally, our second annual Spring Fling Whole School Dance is taking place at the end of March. Student Government is busy exploring theme ideas, planning, and preparing for the coveted event. Thank you for your time and have a nice rest of your evening.
Thank you, Tara. I'm from Stratford High School, Tiana Golding.
Good evening. On February 22nd, the Art and Culinary Departments collaborated to host Stratford High's first Super Bowl. Students in ceramics classes crafted beautiful bowls and spoons while the soup was made by the talented culinary artists at SHS. The sets were sold for $20 each, and all proceeds were donated to the Sterling House Food Pantry. The SHS Department raised approximately $1,000. SHS is happy to report that 53 SHS juniors are signed up for our SAT prep classes. Juniors can choose to attend sessions on Tuesday, Thursday, and/or Saturday. The goal of this program is to provide students individual and targeted instruction and practice as they prepare for the upcoming school day administration of the SAT. Thank you to Dr. Osunde, Dr. Geda, Dr. Daniels, Mrs. Yvonne Temple, and district coordinators for making this opportunity possible. Our school counseling department is nearing the end of scheduling for the 2023-2024 school year. On Friday, February 24th, Chelsea DeLucia from the Educational Opportunity Center met with students and parents for individual family support on completing their FAFSA. During the month of February, the Black Student Union presented an African-American history segment every morning. My favorite episode discussed the impact and influence of Harriet Tubman on the freedom of enslaved African-American men, women, and children. Additionally, the BSU-sponsored Spirit Week. The themes included "Rev Your Heritage," "Throwback Thursday," "Black Excellence," "Dress Your Best," "Blackout Friday," and more. Congratulations to the BSU team for their hard work this month. The Humanities Department at Stratford High, Alpha, and Binnell have partnered with the Blues and Beyond during the first semester of the Black, African-American, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies Course. During March, they will invite parents and community members to an evening showcase, where students perform lyrical pieces by Blues musicians. The African-American journey in the United States over the past several hundred years is documented by and reflected in the evolution of African-American music, and the submissions emphasize how far we have come as a country and analyze what we can do differently. Marching Band students from Binnell and Stratford High School were invited to the premiere of Chain Can Dunk at Disney Studios in California. This movie was filmed at Binnell High School this past year. Students reported having the time of their lives and enjoyed their canines. This week, band, choir, and orchestra students attending the Disney World trip were assigned roomings to prepare for their stay. Additionally, the SHS and VHS World Language students attending the Europe trip are finalizing their plans ahead of the trip in April 2023. Stratford High School administrators have enacted a hallway sweep policy to prevent students from lingering in the hallways. I'm happy to report that this system has decreased the amount of students in the hallways during class and increased attendance. On March 11th, the Science Olympia team will travel to UConn to compete in their first competition in Connecticut. I'm looking forward to sharing with you in April how this goes. For the sports update, the SHS cheerleading team are in fourth place in SWCs, and Kara Brooks was inducted to the All-State Team. They finished sixth out of 13 teams in the state championships. Our girls' basketball team qualified for the state tournament and is playing New Milford tonight. The dance team has been dancing their way to the top. They took first place at the NFA Norwich Free Academy Dance Competition and finished third out of 17 teams in Fairfield. In addition, they were recognized as the most spirited team and finished fourth in the state hip-hop division. On Saturday, February 11th, Stratford High School hosted the SWC Wrestling Championships. Jake Kizwanos, Jamez DuHansik, and Justin DuHansik all won their weight class in the SWC Championships, as SHS finished fourth in that event. Additionally, Jake Kizwanos and Jamez DuHansik both won the Class L All-State Championships and were named Class L All-State. Nate Nagel and Justin DuHansik both finished in third place. The SHS team finished in fifth place in Class L. The state open championships took place on Friday, February 24th, and Saturday, February 25th. We are happy to report that Jake Kizwanos finished third in the 195-pound weight class and that James DuHansik won the 220-pound division and is currently the reigning SWC Class L and state open champion. Congratulations. We had three young ladies competing in the state open wrestling championships: SHS captain Lindsay Riewald, Cheyenne Rolle, and Deanna McKay. After competing on the boys' team all year, they are now able to compete against other female wrestlers. Lindsay finished in fourth place, and Cheyenne came in third place. Congratulations, ladies. SHS senior football star Omar Lee has committed to continuous education and football career at Curry College in Milton, Massachusetts next year. Congratulations to all the winter sports athletes on this amazing season. The SHS Drama Department is hosting their musical, "Once Upon a Mattress," on March 31st and April 1st. We hope to see you there. Additionally, the SHS Counseling Department held a FAFSA celebration after school today, where AirPods were raffled off to seniors who completed their FAFSA. Thank you for the opportunity to inform you on the events occurring at Stratford High, and I look forward to speaking to you again in April.
She's being modest, but Tiana is in the cast of "Once Upon a Mattress." So we definitely need to make it out so we can see her in that awesome production. Thank you, ladies. I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Osunde for our presentations tonight.
We refer to those things as tall people problems. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's an honor to engage in these presentations. In a few moments, I will ask the staff members and the school leaders from the Eli Whitney community to come up here to get recognized. But before I do that, I would like to take a moment to ask everybody to stand and put their hands together for Mrs. Tori Florak. If you know Tori Florak, she doesn't want the spotlight on her. But I told her she could not avoid this because, you know, I spent two years with her as a colleague, and I had a chance to learn a tremendous amount from her, but she recently retired. And she retired after over 40 years of service to the Stratford Public Schools. So I hope you're enjoying it. I know it's only been a few weeks, but we felt strongly that you deserved this recognition. And for our audience, just to give a quick bio about this tremendous four-plus decades of service to Stratford Public Schools. Ms. Florak, again, her career as a 6th grade teacher at Chapel Elementary, right, in 1976. She served at a series of our elementary schools and ultimately entered administration in 2006. She's been so instrumental to the work of the district and the outcomes for students. In 2010, she became the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. In 2011, she became the Curriculum Coordinator for Math and Science, K-8 adding middle school responsibilities. And ultimately, in 2013, she entered the Assistant Principal role. And in 2014, she became the principal at Eli Whitney, and she's been there since. If you have a chance to speak to Tori, and you talk to her about why she does this work, she'll share with you that her sole purpose is to make sure that every child who accesses her building leaves as an independent thinker, okay? She has been a mentor, she has been a friend, she's been an impactful educator, and we wish you nothing but good health, memories, adventure, and retirement. If you can, I would like for you to come up. We have a few tokens of our appreciation. Please put your hands together. I would like Ms. Cochran to come down for a quick photo up.
I truly appreciate this. Dr. Osunde is absolutely correct. I do hate the spotlight, but I do want to acknowledge we have an Eli Whitney contingency here. And Eli Whitney is a school of distinction because it is a learning community, where the educators are educators of distinction, and we work closely with our students and their families, who are also members of the distinctive group. So thank you for this. Board members, thank you for all you do. So often, people forget that you volunteer to do this, and you do a lot for the students and families of Stratford, and it's good work. I miss being a part of this school system, but I have great memories, and I'm very proud to be a resident of Stratford and to have served the Stratford Public Schools for the last 46.5 years. So thank you.
So Mrs. Florak actually created a perfect segue. At this time, I'm going to ask interim principal Robert Terry to come up, as well as the rest of the professional staff of Eli Whitney, who is in attendance tonight. As you heard Principal Florak speak, you know, Eli Whitney actually accomplished what is a remarkable feat. Most recently, this professional community, and I always tell people, there is some magic that's happening at Eli. I don't know what it is, but we need to find a way to continue to replicate it. But through the pandemic, the professional community at Eli Whitney achieved the most remarkable things that I've seen in all of my career. They achieved and were recognized by the State Department of Education as a school of distinction because of their growth, okay? Because of their growth. Mind you, during the pandemic, okay? Across the country, we had a chance as the board to take a look at a performance data last fall, and that's the foundation for a lot of our improvement efforts. But Eli found a way to position the kids to grow as academics. More than 70% of their students are hitting proficient benchmarks. That is remarkable. Please put your hands together. When you further disaggregate the data, our students with high needs are meeting proficiency benchmarks as well. Please put your hands together. So you did receive the recognition from the State Department of Education. We felt strongly that from the Board of Education, you should receive a recognition from us as well. I know it's a small group here today, but please let everybody else in the professional community know how impressed and how proud we are of the magic that you all create at Eli Whitney. Again, put your hands together for him. Again, another round of applause for just the amazing things. It's a great honor and pleasure of mine to introduce the next person who will be recognized. In November, Connecticut Association of Schools announced its 2023 Elementary School Assistant Principal of the Year, okay? And oftentimes, we talk about the talent that exists here in Stratford, and we talk about ensuring that our neighbors and the rest of the state recognize the talent that does exist here. We need to do a better job of celebrating and promoting the talent that we have here. So the Elementary School Assistant Principal of the Year is an award that honors high-performing assistant principals who have demonstrated extraordinary leadership, a passion for educational excellence, a commitment to their staff and students, service to the communities, and contributions to the overall profession of school administration. For us, that person is no other than Ms. Arlette Johnson. She praises her professionalism, enthusiasm, strong instruction of leadership skills, and deep passion for learning and growth. One parent said, "The children's eyes light up with excitement when they see Ms. Johnson, and they love sharing their day with her because she knows, because they know she cares." So Ms. Johnson, on behalf of the Stratford Board of Education, congratulations on this recognition and accomplishment, and thank you for representing all of us in the educational landscape of Connecticut, for representing Stratford as a community. And we wish you well. To the best of my knowledge, you'll advance at the national level. Yeah? Go get it.
Wow, thank you so much. It's very emotional to be standing here and being recognized by the Board of Education. 20 years, exactly this month I came to the States by myself. Twenty years exactly this month I came to the States by myself with two hundred dollars and a bag full of dreams. I learned English, I learned Spanish, I got into a job that I love. I entered this profession because I love the children and, you know, while we're here, you know, it's bigger than ourselves. I just feel so blessed to join the Stratford community and be part of this beautiful town. And, you know, I fell in love with our children, our community. I want to thank my wonderful principal, Eric. Thank you so much. You're so kind. You're such a wonderful mentor, and I learn with you every single day. I also want to thank all of my colleagues who are here, the administrators, Dr. Sunday, Dr. Gata, all of you guys for, you know, making a positive impact in the life of our children. You know, the job never ends, and I'm just so proud to be part of it. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
It's always an honor to tell the good stories of all the amazing things that are happening in Stratford. There's more to come, okay? There's more to come. Thank you.
Let's just call it a night now. Get better than that, all right? Congratulations to everybody. It's so amazing. Moving on to our public forum, I believe we still have no public speaker signed up, so maybe next month. And so we will push on to our administrative executive report. And Dr. Sunday, you are once again up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just take a quick moment to extend my appreciation. I was not able to participate in the January board meeting. I did have a chance to observe it. My wife and I were blessed to welcome our first child. He is a blessing, but if you see bags under my eyes, just play along. It's been a very busy time for us, and as you heard Ms. Florrick share to our board members and our committee members, this is a volunteer role, okay? This is a labor of love for the children of Stratford. This is an advocacy position for the work that we're doing. Over the last month, and really over the last six to eight weeks, this committee, the Finance Committee as well as the Board of Education, has been diving deep into the budget work. I do know that I have carved out time to share my personal appreciation to the Board of Education, but I would like to also extend my appreciation to the members of the Finance Committee, specifically Sue Lance, Ben Proto, and Bob David, for their relentless commitment to ensuring that all the opportunities in Stratford are maximized to the extent possible. Personally, very proud of this budget. When we entered this process, we set out a few different objectives, okay? A few different aims as we consider next year. Chief among them was to create a budget that keeps our staff to the extent possible intact. We have a lot of improvement goals, and we've spoken about this very publicly here. It's going to take everybody being together, working hard together, holding each other accountable in order to accomplish some of the growth things that we're aspiring to accomplish. To do this work, engaged in deep analysis, okay? And to the extent possible, recognizing that oftentimes in most communities, the budget can be an emotionally charged topic, okay? In some spaces, budget feels like a bad word. So this budget itself, we're confident minimizes the opportunities for emotionally charged discussions. And to the extent possible, being fiscally conscious and aware of the burden to the taxpayer, we feel that this budget proposal at three point eight-nine or three point nine reflects the work and commitment of this administration in this Finance Committee. The other piece now was to make sure that as we continue to work together as a board, it allows us to collaborate deeply and have discussion in a respectful space aimed at the mission and the vision of the district. I think we've accomplished all of those things. So as we move forward with the rest of the night, I again express my personal appreciation to the board and the Finance Committee, Ben, Susan, and Bob, and my personal appreciation to my administration, all of them. And a little extra special thank you to Ms. Pamela Mangini, who is just a savant at this work. Please put your hands together. So again, thank you all for your energy, your time. Thank you for putting Stratford children at the core of what we are discussing and what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm confident that however the dust settles, kids will remain at the center of our conversation. Next, I'm happy to announce that our partners at Sterling House Community Center, who have just been an incredible and valued partner for us here at the Board of Education for a significant amount of time, saw a need in the school system and recognizing the disruption of the pandemic and its impact on learning loss, they applied to the State Department of Education for a grant. Happy to announce that they received a grant award in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. If you know Amanda Meeson, you know she's the champion for community and bringing the community together. This grant allows us to, allows them to work with the school system, to work with our teachers, to provide enrichment opportunities to our children. But also, for a subgroup of our children, they're able to provide targeted tutoring services to help close learning gaps. When you think about the work we took on last spring with the adoption of a new strategic plan, one of our board priorities was centered on family and community partnerships. Shared with Amanda that this partnership, this grant, is a clear indication of that priority. Last, graduation date. We had our second snow day yesterday, and I know in the conversation I had with our Principal Delfano today, he shared that some kids are starting to have senioritis, okay? Oftentimes, we like our students to wait until about May for that to happen, but I suppose February and early March is, you know, new kids today. But we'll continue to monitor the weather over the next couple of weeks, and we are pretty confident that at the March meeting, this board will have a definitive date for graduation. Right now, we're still trending towards June twelfth. And that's it for the executive report.
Thank you, Dr. Sunday. Any questions for Dr. Sunday? Yes, Ms. QB.
Just to follow up, at the last meeting you were here, I brought up about, you know, finding ways to incorporate student voice into our work. And I know you said you were going to look into some things. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to get around to that, if there's an update, I'd love to hear.
Absolutely. I do have, I meet, just last week, I meet with, I meet with a selection of kiddos who serve on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. We have a few more meetings to the back end of the year, about two more. And ideally, what I was hoping to do is invite board members to the extent that it works out with your schedule, to perhaps join in that conversation and hear from our students. We have representatives from our secondary schools, both middle schools and both high schools in Alpha. You know, and our kiddos have a tremendous amount of ideas. I spoke about the budget to our kids last week. So I do have those ideas, but I'm also open to other ideas that this board would suggest.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Sunday. We'll move on to Ms. Mangini at her chief operating officer's report.
Great. Thank you very much. One of the more exciting things is the Stratford Public Schools is pleased to announce that we did opt-in to participate in the State of Connecticut's School Meals Assistance Revenue for Transition Program. It's basically the Smart Funds Grant Program two point oh. It did begin today in all our schools, whereby we are providing schools free school breakfast and lunch meals to all students, obviously at no cost, and that will be through the end of this school year. We are still encouraging our families to submit free and reduced applications, but I would just like to note that the schools that are continuing under the Community Eligibility Provision Program, that's Franklin, Lordship, Nichols, Second Hill Lane, Johnson, and Soto, obviously continue with free meals, and those schools are not required to submit those free and reduced meal applications per the state guidelines. So it's important to make that distinction. And all of this information is on our website. And also, you can get applications for the free and reduced meals on our website, as well as in the schools themselves, if you need a hard copy. So again, that's very exciting news. And the other thing I just wanted to share is that kindergarten registration did start last week. It's going well. It's been robust. We've had a lot of registrations. There was open house as far as a virtual meeting to help families navigate through the kindergarten program. And we did have our registration secretary there to help them as well. She happens to speak Spanish, which is very helpful to our Spanish-speaking families here in town. But we continue also to get a lot of new registrations. So we're keeping busy in that area. We're closely monitoring the kindergarten registrations to determine what schools are filling up first, but we truly won't have a handle on that until the summer. But that's my report this evening.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mangini? Seeing that my son was so excited about his free lunch now, I'll tell you that. Those mozzarella stuffed breadsticks were in it.
That's great.
Thank you. We'll move on to Dr. Gata at her teaching and learning report.
Thank you. I have to admit that the presentations that were made by the high school students really covered quite a bit, we have to say here tonight. But I do want to recognize a couple of things that were already mentioned, so if that's all right with the board. First of all, I do have to recognize the SOUPER Bowl event that took place. It was really, I think, an outstanding success. The collaboration between the Art Department and the Culinary Arts Department here at Stratford High School raised, as was mentioned, over a thousand dollars for the Sterling House Food Pantry. I liked it so much, I came back and got another bowl. So I have two bowls, and they're going to go to some people. Very special. Great idea. Third graders from Johnson House Elementary School have art displayed at the administration building, and it will be viewable by their families, thanks to their teacher, Michelle Gagnon. And we always enjoy having, you know, one of the nicest things to see is looking out into the hallway and parents and their, you know, with their children showing their artwork that's displayed. So I think there may be plans for displaying some more artwork throughout town, but we'll wait and see how that develops. Also, I think also was mentioned, but I just want to recognize the indoor spectacular drum line and Kelly Guard event that's happening at Pennell High School on March eleventh. So we're all looking forward to that. I have seen some board members, I've actually bumped into you, at some very exciting things that are happening, and that's the Invention Convention this year for fourth graders. It's just, you know, one of the things I try to get to every year. And finishing up this year, I think the snow day may have, this week, excuse me, I think the snow day may have interrupted the schedule just a little bit. But students from all schools, all of our elementary schools, who are moving forward to the regional conventions in each building, will be announced at the end of one of the days this week. It was supposed to be on Tuesday, so we'll see how that works out. The nice thing is, the next step is, you know, the state conference, and we have had students who have participated at the national level as well, so we wish everybody good luck there. Our eighth-grade science teachers have been participating in Open Sciad training, started this week. There's one more day to go, again, on the snow day, so we have to see where that winds up. But if you remember, Open Sciad is an open source program that we use here, and it's been, we've been working on training teachers in this program now for a couple of years. So the resources is free, the cost is the training, so we're near the end of the training piece. So a lot of good feedback on that particular program. We also had, and through the work of Ms. Borges, and I think Joanna, also Nigerian Garp worked, we had teachers training, twenty teachers training in climate training with Joanne Freiberg and Pat Sacone last week. They spent two days in that session, and they will have two more days on restorative practice. The MABE visit, which is a state, actually, it's a national organization, I mentioned that briefly when we were talking to the Finance Committee. MABE is our multicultural organization, visited our dual-language program at Second Hill Lane. Ms. Ari says the feedback was terrific, and she will also be presenting at the statewide conference on March eleventh. She also wanted me to know and wanted you to know that an after-school culture and literacy program began today at Second Hill Lane. I'll be sharing more information about that to you in the future. We are all, well, the Bar Foundation will be coming on April third through fifth. We will be hosting them here, and so you'll hear more about that. There's several days involved in that. Board members will be probably involved in that visit as well. And last but not least, we're all looking forward to March twenty-ninth, Professional Development Day for our staff. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Any questions for Dr. Gata? Yes, sir.
With the dual-language program, can you get us a number as the number for the amount of students per grade that are participating in the program? And then, I know you had done a presentation about, you know, our students as a whole and our minority students who are, for the most part, performing above the state benchmarks. But can we get some information on where our dual-language students are performing in regards to or equal to our other students, our non-dual-language students? Just so we can see how, for the most part, see how that program is performing in comparison to our other students.
So I can give a brief, and again, if you recall, we did do an academic achievement, academic performance presentation at the September meeting. And just listening to your question, I think there's perhaps maybe some confusion. Our students of color are actually not performing at the state benchmark. Most of our children, students of color or not students of color...
Are above the state benchmark.
Are not, with the exception of the kiddos at Eli. Most of them are not. But if you remember, one of the shining spots at that presentation in September was our children who were second-language learners, okay? So in the last LINKS test, our kids are absolutely performing at the highest levels. So when we talk about the assets and strengths that come with that signature program, the dual-language program, there is no question that our kiddos in that program, those hundred to hundred and twenty kids, are thriving. The next evolution of this work is to make sure our other subgroups experience that level of performance achievement.
Right. So if we could get those benchmarks, so we just see the comparison?
Absolutely.
We appreciate that. I have another question, please.
Can I just add to that, though? Our students in Stratford who take the LOSLINKS, which is the language acquisition test, for our multilingual students whose first language is not English, who receive services from the district in the TESL program or the ESOLO program, when our students test, that assessment determines whether or not they continue to receive services, you know, they exit the program essentially. Our students perform above, on that assessment, our students perform above the state area. The one area that we feel we need to strengthen a little bit and, you know, isn't exactly number one, is the actual oral presentation part of that program. So that's an area of focus for us, but for the most part, on the LOSLINKS, our students do very well on that particular assessment.
But that's not just dual-language students, right? That's all ESL students across the district?
No, it also involves the multilingual, the part of the dual-language program, which are our students whose first language is not English.
But it's both groups. It's not just the dual-language students. It's ESL students across the district.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the end of it?
It includes, it's all of our English-language learners, including the dual-language students.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yes. So you had given a presentation too about our transition of teachers college. Maybe at the next meeting, if you can give an update on where we are with the state and whether we'll get a waiver or where we are in the process, just so we can keep in private. perspective of that.
We're waiting for that information.
That was, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Gata? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Gata. We will move on to our consent agenda. I believe we can take it all as a package. So I will entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2023, Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy? to approve this month's personnel document, and also to approve the proposed field trip
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 7-0. I will move on to item number two, proposed policies. of Stratford High School student to the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. These are first read status. So I will, we'll have discussion after the motion, how about that? So moved by Mrs. Bedell. Any discussion? Sound good? Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the first read status of policy number 3160, Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Henrich? which is our line item transfers policy.
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
So moved by Ms. Bedell. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Second.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Cupy.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Any discussion?
Yes.
Would one of our policy committee members like to give us a little?
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, passes 7-0.
Sure, so this particular policy is basically, you recall in several of our finance meetings
Thank you. We will now move on to items for action and discussion. We have two proposed budget transfers, both of which have been passed on to us from the finance committee with favorable recommendation.
before, it was brought up because our COO would have to get approval from us to transfer
So I will entertain a motion to approve budget transfer number one, which is to adjust accounts in object 560 per the guidance from the annual state report.
funds within object codes. And so members of the committee had proposed maybe giving her the autonomy to make those
RCA should be budgeted in expense to VoAG and other schools. This line is to account for partial day programs. The total budget transfer is for $76,500.
sorts of adjustments without our approval.
So moved.
However, making transfers across object codes would still require our approval.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltie?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Cupy?
So that particular policy covers that.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
We have some thresholds in there that we would like you to review. It also includes our current practice, which was never formalized into a policy before, even though it's what we've been doing all along, but now we formalize that into this policy. There's also a section for emergency transfer, so if you don't be alarmed by that, state statute requires that we have language about emergency transfer in there. Now, the amount or the threshold, that if you have feedback, definitely share those with us.
Great. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
No disrespect to Dr. Sunday, but I don't think he maintains the accounting of the expenditures. I think that's Ms. Mangini who typically does that in the second line item. I know they crossed off for designated, is that responsibility on the sole-
So, we can absolutely retain that language. I actually proposed striking designated because when I was researching other districts, I didn't see them using that language. And so I thought maybe I would propose sticking with sort of that consistency. But if you feel like we should do that, I'm totally open.
I mean, I'm not, it's not something that I'm not going to know if the language changes, but just for clarification, again, no disrespect to Dr. Sunday, he doesn't do that, so-
And I'm sure other districts, the superintendent aren't doing it, but it's just the language that I saw. So we can certainly go ahead and keep that.
I'll share this, I certainly do not feel disrespected. By nature of the operational management of things, most of these things will get delegated to any division of our department. Ms. Mangini and I speak on a daily basis and she would not make a move as such without my approval.
I'm not uncomfortable with the language.
Are you proposing we keep it? My designated, are you proposing we keep it?
Just in the second, just in the second line item, I mean, the first sentence, he's responsible for administering and monitoring, but the second question, the superintendent who is designated.
Oh, I see.
Because it's, again.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a question for clarification. I noticed on our agenda, it says policy number 3160, line item transfers, but on the policy corrections, it says policy 3150.
Go to Keynarr, my friend. Do we know policy?
It's 3160.
It's 3150?
I think it's 50.
Okay, we'll check in, we'll clarify. My other documents do say 3160, but we'll clarify.
There's a series when you follow the NCES guidelines for policies and it's under the 3,000, and you do have wiggle room on what number you can call it, so you may see it slightly different in different districts.
Just want to make sure that.
We'll clarify in the next reading.
3150? Okay, so we'll amend the motion, I suppose. So I was asking for clarification, Mr. Henrich. On one sheet it says policy 3150, but then on our agenda it says 3160, so just wanted to make sure we were talking.
It's like a brain puzzle. All right, so-
Dr. Sunday must have done that because Pam doesn't make those numerical statements.
Listen, I'm sleep deprived.
One other question, though?
Yes, sir.
From a legal standpoint, I know we've always said we're allowed to transfer by the administration without our approval, to be allowed to transfer within budget or within object codes. Is $7,500, is there some legal standing to that number or is it just a random number?
So prior to us joining the board, past boards, many years ago had it at 7,500, and then a few boards prior to us changed it to 5,000, and then it got changed back, I think still before our time, to 7,500, so that's what it's been right now. We do have the power to change it if we want.
And I guess I would just ask, Ms. Mangini, is that, is there some state law, some state statute that dictates a number, or will, or were you even, even if we give you the authority to do that and you do that, will that put you in a bad position in your accounting or budgeting or legal precedence?
No, I appreciate the question because frankly, no, there is no legal statute or legal statute that prevents us from having a higher dollar amount. Most of this language was taken from CAPE anyway. The only thing I will say is we tried to stay around the 7,500, we stayed at the 7,500 at the recommendation of our policy committee members, because that is what the town requires. But honestly, we are one line in the town, so, you know, that really exceeding that isn't that problematic. But we are staying within the 7,500 if we move from object code to object code. Within those object codes, we do have a little more flexibility, which is what I think you wanted us to accomplish so we don't bring all of those salary adjustments to you.
Yeah, it was, it was a legal, it was, you had the authority, I had the authority.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to point out, if you want us to increase that, you know, from object code to object code to let's say maybe 10,000 without our approval, give us that feedback so that when we meet, we can incorporate that into the policy. Any of you?
Okay, thank you very much. Do I need to make a motion to amend the motion to read 3150? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Bedell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Carol Fabian. And so let's have a roll call vote to approve the amended motion to approve the first read status of 3150. I'll start with Ms. Cupy.
Yes.
Ms. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 7-0. We'll move on. I will entertain a motion to approve the first read status of policy number 3542. And that is-
So moved.
Second.
Great, and Ms. Bedell, would you like to give us an update on this one?
So this is, well, currently we're not charging for our meals, so this would, you know, go into effect next, well, right away, but next year. And again, in line with the CAPE language, it really outlines how our food services are charged, how students can accumulate some charges, excuse me, my head is not all right there right now. And specifically, you know, taking a stance on those outstanding meal charges and rackete charges to stand out. There's some changes in red in the policy. And there's not much to say.
Sure, I can add, you know, we've been operating under free meals for a few years now due to COVID. And so when our funding ran out at the end of December, we wanted to make sure we had a proper policy in place as we were transitioning. Pam, remind me, I don't think we had any charge policy, food charge policy prior to COVID, right? So we are establishing that right here.
It did not, and we need that required by the state to have this policy.
Exactly. Yeah, so we, this is something we're implementing that did not exist before. And so please read through, you know, the proposed process of how we would collect, right? So they have different strategies in place, whether it's the guidance counselors, et cetera, our technology that's going to trigger notifications for families when you hit a certain number of meals or threshold. You know, if attempts are being made that are just unsuccessful over a while, then it gets kicked to the principals to try to assist with getting collection. But, you know, it's not something we have to worry about right now because thank God we're getting free meals.
The definitions of communications to families and so on.
Exactly.
Now, forgive me if I missed it, but is there something in here that addresses what happens if a student is habitually delinquent on their account and how do they then obtain food? Is that, is that-
So the state a few years ago, you know, made a policy or law saying you can't just give a child-
Nothing.
You know, a cheese sandwich, right? For lunch, like you just can't do that. So we do have to provide a proper meal for them. In the policy, we have, you know, set a threshold of how many we would give them before they have to, you know, like actually pay. It's, they'll still have to pay for it, but we're not going to not feed them, right? So it's a very delicate process. But hey, after you've hit, you know, three meals or five meals, it's kind of like, hey, the process of collecting on that starts. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Good discussion, sir. Great. Thank you. Any other discussion on this policy? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 7-0. I will move on to item number two, motion to reconsider, and we will be-
And then so once we reconsider, then we will amend the original motion and it's a little complicated.
Thank goodness you're here. All right, so we have a motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to amend the policy and return it to the original number of 3160.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy.
And include in all of the other amendments that were previously approved, besides the 3160.
Motion made by Mr. Henrich, seconded by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on it. Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 7-0. I will move on. I will entertain a motion to approve the first read status of policy number 3542. And that is-
So moved.
Second.
Great, and Ms. Bedell, would you like to give us an update on this one?
So this is, well, currently we're not charging for our meals, so this would, you know, go into effect next, well, right away, but next year. And again, in line with the CAPE language, it really outlines how our food services are charged, how students can accumulate some charges, excuse me, my head is not all right there right now. And specifically, you know, taking a stance on those outstanding meal charges and rackete charges to stand out. There's some changes in red in the policy. And there's not much to say.
Sure, I can add, you know, we've been operating under free meals for a few years now due to COVID. And so when our funding ran out at the end of December, we wanted to make sure we had a proper policy in place as we were transitioning. Pam, remind me, I don't think we had any charge policy, food charge policy prior to COVID, right? So we are establishing that right here.
It did not, and we need that required by the state to have this policy.
Exactly. Yeah, so we, this is something we're implementing that did not exist before. And so please read through, you know, the proposed process of how we would collect, right? So they have different strategies in place, whether it's the guidance counselors, et cetera, our technology that's going to trigger notifications for families when you hit a certain number of meals or threshold. You know, if attempts are being made that are just unsuccessful over a while, then it gets kicked to the principals to try to assist with getting collection. But, you know, it's not something we have to worry about right now because thank God we're getting free meals.
The definition of communications to families and so on.
Exactly.
Now, forgive me if I missed it, but is there something in here that addresses what happens if a student is habitually delinquent on their account and how do they then obtain food? Is that, is that-
So the state a few years ago, you know, made a policy or law saying you can't just give a child-
Nothing.
You know, a cheese sandwich, right? For lunch, like you just can't do that. So we do have to provide a proper meal for them. In the policy, we have, you know, set a threshold of how many we would give them before they have to, you know, like actually pay. It's, they'll still have to pay for it, but we're not going to not feed them, right? So it's a very delicate process. But hey, after you've hit, you know, three meals or five meals, it's kind of like, hey, the process of collecting on that starts. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Good discussion, sir. Great. Thank you. Any other discussion on this policy? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 7-0.
Mrs. Cophrin, may I bring us back to the previous policy?
I would love to.
I knew something wasn't right. We do have a policy 3150. And all of my previous drafts that I sent to the policy committee, this policy should be, that you just acted on for first reading, should be 3160. It was a typo somehow on documents, so you may want to amend your motion. I apologize, I should have caught it more quickly, but I just didn't see that either and I just looked up on the website. And it's about budget adoption, it's 3150.
Oh geez, all right. Robert's rules master.
It's better to take care of it now.
So since, since, just guessing at this, but so since we've already, since we've already voted on it, I think the proper way would make a motion to reconsider, and somebody from the prevailing side would make that motion, so I will, and then we can go back and reconsider our vote. So I'd make a motion to reconsider?
So moved.
All right, second.
Any discussion?
So any discussion on the motion to reconsider, and we will be-
And then so once we reconsider, then we will amend the original motion and it's a little complicated.
Thank goodness you're here. All right, so we have a motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to amend the policy and return it to the original number of 3160.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy.
And include in all of the other amendments that were previously approved, besides the 3160.
Motion made by Mr. Henrich, seconded by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on it. Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
So we will report back to?
We haven't seen anything on our bills yet for the first two schools.
Thank you.
Great, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to the solar project for Worcester. I will entertain a motion to approve the solar project for Worcester Middle School, DAS Project ID 1380108, RR PV.
Motion approved.
Moved by Mr. Henrich, seconded by Mrs. Wiltie. Was that right?
Yes.
Can't see any.
Sorry.
That's great. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to Worcester, is the work that's happening at Worcester now in preparation for repairing the roof to receive solar panels? And then I guess my second question on that would be, being pretty well versed in solar panel usage, when there's a problem and the user is notified, is it the school system or will it be the town?
So, sorry, can you repeat your first question?
Sure, right now Worcester is covered in construction on their roof.
Oh, okay, yeah, so this, this project is part of a, partially going to be funded by DAS, that's why there's that project number. So the RR at the end is for roof repair and then the PV is for the solar.
Got it.
So solar is actually phase two of that project.
Perfect. And the second part of my question, when there's an issue with the panel not operating, throwing the grid off, who will be the point of notification? Will it be the town because it's a town building? Or will it be Mr. Roggerio's office?
I don't know the answer to that offhand. I know the town is going to own the solar system. And I think that, that would just have to be worked out. And I'm not sure, generally, there's an operations and maintenance contract for operational solar systems. And, you know, so there would be preventative maintenance and then someone on call, you know, to address issues if they're not generating. So you, I'm not sure how that's going to be set up, who the contact in the town is, and then who the company is that's going to be performing the operations and maintenance. But, you know, I think that is something that we have been in discussions with and is understood and will be worked out after this is fully installed.
If the board could just be notified when that decision is made, only because I know time is of the essence and if it's something that the school is responsible, the school system is responsible for, I'd like for us to have that information.
So the town is the lead in this project. But communication absolutely, absolutely has to organically happen between the town and Mr. Roggerio's office. I know Rich has a very close working relationship with Daniel Wakelin and his team and around big projects. You know, at times I personally communicate with Chris Tempeyak. So the communication channels will be open, but the lead on this project is certainly the town.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote, Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item number four, proposed curriculum. I will entertain a motion to approve Yukon English 1007, which is a seminar and studio in academic writing and multimodal composition. So moved. So moved by Ms. Carol Fabian.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion? And can you give us a little update?
Sure. So this is, as Tara touched on, as Dr. Gata touched on, Yukon has reevaluated one of their courses. And so this will be replacing one of our Yukon ECE English classes for seniors. They have shifted from more of a reading-based and writing curriculum to exploring more of the writing aspect and the different, as it says, multimodal composition, ways to share their thinking and their writing through various avenues, whether it be like a writing piece, a podcast, digital media, anything like that. So it's making that shift to align us better and keep us in 21st century and Yukon ECE credit.
Wonderful, that's great. Any, I believe, so, how many credits?
I believe they get four.
Yeah, I know.
College credits.
Any further discussion?
Maybe, so we just add, you know, it started about like three years ago when they decided they wanted to reevaluate their course. And so it's not finalized, it's not fully transitioned yet. What we're doing is positioning ourselves to be ready for that and have our students be prepared for that. So we're not behind or we're not?
No, we're actually right on track. Yukon had shifted how they're doing it at the university level and have now begun workshops with all the Yukon ECE certified teachers throughout the state. And so they get together and then they get to kind of network within the state with other teachers who teach this course and evaluate how they're going to make the shift. So it's just our, at this point, our teachers are just rewriting the curriculum to better align it with what Yukon is expecting. And they're shifting as they go and as Yukon shares that kind of information with them.
No, one more, so there won't, will there be, once Yukon settles on their curriculum, will there be further changes that we're expecting to this?
Well, so far they've done the units that have already been, like, approved and processed. So this is our units that we can, and then they'll continue to add on to it as it goes.
Okay, so, well, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Henrich?
Yes.
Ms. Bedell?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiltie?
Yes.
Ms. Cupy?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item number five. I will entertain a motion to approve the itemized estimate of expenditures for fiscal year 2324 as forwarded to the board with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee in the amount of $127,993,416, which represents a 3.9% increase. So moved. So moved by Mrs. Wiltie?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cupy. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Henrich?
Just a couple, couple things. During last year's budget process, Dr. Sunday coined the phrase, "reengineering for better efficiencies." I don't see any of that within our budget. In my construction business, I love tearing things apart, getting it down to the bare studs and then putting it back together creates a much better product. I think last year when we did it, it proved to be very beneficial. And I haven't seen any of that. And I think there's a lot of room for that within our budget. So that's one. Secondly, we've talked about the Esser cliff. And nothing's been done about it since the initial movement of positions from, from the original budget into the grants. And we're now adding new positions, which we as leaders, it's our responsibility, we, some of us have been on the board for three, four years, we can't say somebody else did it. It's our responsibility to address that issue. And I'll keep ringing that bell. I think it is our responsibility, I think we need to take it on. And I don't think adding positions without, without some reengineering that goes behind it, it shows strong leadership qualities on our side. And then just the last point is, we were designated Alliance District. What happens now is ECS funding, any, any new monies for the ECS funding circumvents the town and goes directly to the Board of Ed. So although we're only asking for 3.9%, the bill that we're sending the taxpayer is 3.9% plus $2 million. The taxpayer needs to make up that circumvented $2 million. And so, so for those reasons, I can't support that budget. And I think there's, I think there's a lot more that can and should be done. I'm strongly in favor of providing a better education for our students. I think we did that last year, even though we worked with a smaller number that was given, given to us by the council. And I think we'll be forced to do it again. And I have faith that Dr. Sunday will be able to reengineer and find those efficiencies. But I think the way the budget was proposed, I can't, there's too many cliffs, there's too many financial issues that were creating this Alliance District on top of the Esser fund, this Alliance District cliff we're creating on top of the Esser District cliff. And the fact that we're not reengineering sends a bad message, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discuss, well, I'm sorry, we do have one to respond to.
Sure. I think, you know, again, it's always interesting to listen and digest your take on this analysis. And I would actually ask that maybe you cite your understanding of what reengineering means. Because last year, we did a lot of things to make sure that we had a viable operating budget to run an effective academic program for our district. But if, if the memory is not short enough, perhaps it can take us back. Last year, there were some major pain points. So when I stood in front of the board last year, I asked for 5.5 million or approximately 4.6 over the year before with no additions. In all due respect and in fairness to our schools, all 13 of them and our administrators, whenever they have made requests, and I understand that this has been the process prior to my arrival as well, but whenever they've made requests for what I characterize as program enhancements or new initiatives, it has always been shut down. So to be clear, the requests that they make around new initiatives are always anchored in a self-study about what they need to continue to improve. So you're absolutely right that the Alliance District designation showed up last year. But at the same time, we asked for 5.5 million and we were appropriated 3 million from the town. There was a gap of about $2.5 million that this board had to respond to. The response were proposals that had an impact on our early childhood education programs. And it became a very polarizing point in our community. So I understand and I recognize the advocacy for the burden of the taxpayer. But if you take a look at this budget, and again, I do want to go back and get a better understanding of what you interpret or what you understand to be reengineering. If you take a look at this budget comparative to last year with an ask that I made to the board for 5.5, this year we came in with an ask of about 4.7, trimming off about $700,000. Comparatively, historically on average, this, the superintendent's office has always made an ask of roughly about 4.6, maybe 4.7%. If we're talking about reengineering for efficiencies or analyzing and studying the budget in a way that allows for efficiencies, there is no greater explanation than to say that for the first time in probably about six years, maybe even longer, the difference between the average of 4.6 or 4.7 to a 3.8 should suggest deeper efficiencies and deeper study, particularly as a response to the burden of the taxpayers as well as the town. From a fiscal and economic standpoint, there's been some great improvements. There's a lot of economic development that's happened across the town. As we continue to look at this work, I'll go back and I'll speak about the fiscal cliff because you're absolutely right. This is something that all of us inherited. But again, I'll share that this is not a typical compared to other communities while having these conversations. I personally do not feel that there's a way to avoid what will happen next year. What we do have to do is make sure that we have a strong enough infrastructure and foundation to be able to absorb some of the financial conversations we will have in future years. As we continue to talk about efficiencies and reengineering, if you continue to make a critique about the efficiency of this budget proposal at a 3.9, I also want to bring to the attention of this board, but most especially you, Mr. Henrich, that this proposed budget actually has zero reductions, which is something that, to the best of my knowledge, has not been presented, a budget with a historically low ask. And at the same time, meeting the end of keeping the entire professional staff intact. That is not happening, to the best of my knowledge. And again, for my historians out there, please correct me, but in at least a dozen years. So I don't take the nature of this work lightly. I poured a substantial amount of hours to be in a position to look my staff in the face and say, we have to improve. And it's going to take all of us to do those things. We have to improve, and I recognize that you've asked for resources and support over the last couple of years and you have not received it. But this budget, for the first time in probably about a dozen years, allows us to potentially deliver on that promise or that commitment. A budget that also is responsive to the burden, the tax burden of our taxpayers in our community. But to me, when I look at this budget and I think about the investments, I think we, as a board, the Finance Committee, and certainly my administration, we've done our part to make sure we address every pain point. So as I look forward to the work that we have that goes all the way up to May, to me, an investment in our schools is a common sense investment in the community of Stratford. So without being too tact, I think I have a pretty good response for your questions and I look forward to the conversation moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Sunday. Any further discussion, Ms. Cupy? Did I see, or was it Mrs. Wiltie? I'm sorry, Mrs. Wiltie.
Madam Chair, with your permission, may I read a question and answer that you submitted to Pam? For those who do not check the internet, for those who we?
I would say that.
I think that this is a general question that a lot of us have had during our workshops, a lot of us have had during the planning for fiscal year '25. And I would just like to read it on the record. On February 13th, 2023, Ms. Andrea Parker submitted the question, "Can you explain the GWI and how folding Esser-funded salaries back into our general operation budget might impact it?" That's something that we're all thinking about now and we're all going to be thinking about next year. The general wage increase and step increases that employees receive contractually each year obviously increases annual salaries. Therefore, the total amount in our budget books reflect the increase in employees in those Esser positions we'll receive next year. Thus, there is an increase each year to the total cost of these employees. This happens with all grants and is the reason that we sometimes need to shift costs out of the entitlement grants like IDEA and Title I. The increase in grants are not always able to absorb the increase in salaries. With regard to Esser, when Dr. Robinson was urged by town leaders to use Esser funding to offset general operating costs, she was very clear that this could result in 8% increase request for the fiscal year '25 budget as Ms. Mangini, I, was part of that meeting. However, there was really no choice as the budget appropriation was not adequate to cover costs in that year. And we certainly did not want to reduce staff or to increase class sizes during a pandemic. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I was just going to add that I do appreciate that there are no reductions in positions this year. I just don't think it is responsible to add new positions that are new entirely to the district, some of them. Because it takes a year to even get on your feet and learn a job like this, like any, like any education position like any education position or any, you know, any position you're walking into in a new business or corporation or whatever it might be. To think that we would then have to turn around and eliminate those positions the following year because of this cliff that we speak of so very often is, I think that's more detrimental to our students and to the town and to our staff than not adding them in the first place.
I think that's a fair position. And I think it comes with good thinking and complex thinking and with some level of forecast to fiscal year '25. With all due respect, I think our schools have been patient enough with, in respects, to the ask that they've made over the last six, maybe even eight years. We have an opportunity this year, okay? And if you think about this, what the presentation is, with this 3.9, we did do the calculations with these program enhancements. Or in the absence of these program enhancements, that number would debatably be roughly 3.3%, okay, which, to Mr. Hendrick's point, should suggest to our stakeholders that this budget was deeply well thought out. I think one of the things that is important to really reflect on is this notion that we have an opportunity to respond to the needs of the school year next year in a way that allows us to have productive and quality programs, to respond and create conditions that look similar to what's happening in that Eli. We have 12 other schools that we have to ensure makes progress in that direction. I don't think that making a request for these positions, and to your point about the acclimation phase, we're quite diligent about making sure we bring the talent to people that, you know, we're hopeful that it doesn't take them a year to adapt to the conditions and the needs of our school. We expect them to hit the ground running. I will say this very openly and transparently. We are, I'm involved in a segment of our hiring process and we look for talent that can hit the ground running. Most notably, our interim assistant principals fit that mold right now. We do have the ability to deliver a quality year next year. There is absolutely no way we avoid the challenges of the fiscal cliff in 2025. And I think that's a realization that we as a board have to internally make our peace with. And that's a realization that at the town level, they have to make their peace with as well. But when you think about the work that we're doing right now and the progress we're making as a district, you can't pull that carpet up from under people's feet. Okay, we have to keep this locomotive moving in the right direction. The more of a foundation we have next year of success, performance, and accomplishment, the easier it will be to absorb any of the challenges that come with the fiscal year '25 budget. So it's a comprehensive analysis that has brought a lot of thought. While I do recognize and I honor your analysis on this, our proposal is to hedge against having a successful year next year and then also reducing the radius blast of fiscal year '25.
Any further discussion, Ms. Kupi?
Sure. So I made a comment in the finance committee. I'll just repeat it here, you know. We do a great job here in town servicing our students with exceptionalities. We also do have a responsibility to provide likewise services for our general students. And we should not put ourselves in a position where we're doing less for them. We are the only board, as agents of the state and the town, whose job is to advocate for our learners. That's our responsibility, not to do the council's job. They're tasked with their responsibility. Let them do that. We have to stay focused. Children at the center of what we do. We've put together a strategic operating plan in order to accomplish what we've established. This budget was put together, you know, to achieve those goals. Why are we going to, you know, submit something less than for our children, right? Like, we have an opportunity to, like, can we have one year where we actually do the things, right? Like, every year, we're coming back and it's, we're underfunded, we're underfunded, and we're looking at cutting programs. We talk about, what's that word you used? Cavetch? That's gonna be my new word. We cavetch about families putting their children in private schools or in, you know, neighboring towns, et cetera. If we're not willing to fund the programs here, we can't be mad at them for pulling their children out if we're not meeting their needs. So until we start to do that, we're in no place to really complain, right? That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I agree that we have an obligation to our students. There's, I think all of us up here agree. We wouldn't be here if we didn't agree that we have an obligation to the students. But we also have an obligation to the staff who are going into next year thinking the worst about their positions because they have no idea what's coming. And neither do we, frankly. So I think we have a financial responsibility, not to the town, not to the town council, not to anybody else, but to our staff and our school to not create the biggest possible burst that we have seen in decades in this district on an already, not failing, but on an already troubled area.
But I don't think, I don't think any of us, I apologize. I don't think any of us.
Ms. Kupi, she has the floor. You can't interrupt.
It's okay.
I don't think any of us holds that we need a plan in place, right, for those positions. Like, that's on all of our minds. So we need to agree, do we want to bring those positions into this budget? Because the needs that these new positions are supposed to fill will still be there. So do we want to propose something higher where we're moving those ESAR positions into this budget?
I don't think it's proposing something higher. I think like Mr. Hendrick mentioned before and Dr. Sunday spoke to, reengineering and reallocating resources to where they can be used. We discussed a bit about the dual language program, you know, reallocating different resources in other places. There's gonna have to be a lot more thoughtful thinking about this. Not that this wasn't thoughtful thinking or comprehensive thinking, but there needs to be a lot more because not only do we have a responsibility to these students, we have a huge responsibility to the staff that depends on us too.
I don't disagree that we have a responsibility for the staff.
Yeah, and I don't.
That was part of why they ended up in ESAR because we didn't want to cut them, right? Like, that was sort of a strategy to retain that staff.
You know, it's ironic. And I would certainly not want the message to be lost here. The value we place on our, in our professional community is very evident. You know, I met with all of our administrators today for our monthly professional community learning opportunity. We talked about a series of things. I don't want us to misplace the message here, which is, for fiscal year '25, there's a reality that's completely unavoidable, okay? There's a reality that's completely unavoidable. And I'm saying this in the context of, you know, we're talking about a budget this year and I'm talking about how we've decreased year over year from last year and we've reengineered and all those different things. The responsibility we have is to take head on what's gonna happen in 2025. And in order for us to take that head on in a responsible and efficient and an effective way that minimizes the radius blast, it has to entail engaging in early and consistent conversations between the board and the town. We have to be partners in that work. If this adversarial relationship or dynamic persists, our issue is not a function of what's gonna happen next year or what's gonna happen in fiscal year '25. There will be implications for the next five years. In the context of this, and guess what we're looking at? You heard, even prior to me getting here, it sounds like Dr. Robinson cautioned and warned that you'd be looking at numbers close to 8%. With what has been presented and to your suggestion, you're talking about trimming 8% to 7.7 or 7.8%. It's not that much of a dent at the cost of having a highly productive year with the resources that we stand to put in the hands of our schools. So there is a responsibility. There's no doubt about that. But we can't miss the message that there's a reality that we're all going to have to respond to for fiscal year '25. And I don't know if Fisher Company takes that off of this year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, and, you know, I've been saying, this is our second budget. We've talked about this ESAR cliff. Some of the folks on the board have been on for four years. We can't just turn a blind eye to it and say, well, too bad, nothing we can do about it. We're leaders. It's our obligation to do something about it. But for over the last eight years, when we look back, this board, the Board of Ed, has asked for a number. The council has given us a reduced number. And we've produced a surplus every year. And none of those surplus dollars have ever gone back to help alleviate this cliff. And for members, some of the members on this board, this is their fourth budget. None of them have taken steps to help alleviate that cliff with the surplus. There's ways it could have been done. To just stick your head in the sand and say, there's nothing we can do about it, it is wrong. And I have too much faith in our staff. Their hard work. And I think we need to address the issue. And I think we need to do more than sticking our head in the sand and saying, there's nothing we can do about it. There's ways to make this budget better. To say there's not would be a lie. I could not say that to you with a straight face. It would be a lie to say, we couldn't make this budget better. It would be a lie to say, we couldn't start tackling the issue of that ESAR grant to ease the burden on our staff and our students when that cliff hits. And now we're making a bigger cliff with the Alliance District. And every year, when we start our budgeting, we go to the budgeted number, not the expended number. So if we, if we started with the expended, when we go to the budget number, whatever that surplus was, that's an additional gain to last year's expenditures. We never start with the expended number. We always start with the budgeted number. And for the last eight years, we've had a surplus. So if we started from zero, we might be in a different place, but we don't.
So just, just to clarify a better understanding, your critique of the board, to use your words, burying their head in the sand, actually, content is not, is not accurate. So one of the strategic ways that this board can make the claim that they wanted to be positioned to decrease costs and be responsive to the fiscal cliff was by establishing the Education Reserve Fund, okay? And at their lobby, to their credit, has nothing funded. But, you know, it's starting to become clear to me, because I've heard you cite this and reference this a few times. And perhaps we need to sit down. The year-end balances that the board ultimately ends up with, and we cannot really use the COVID years as a good litmus for this work. But whatever balance ends up in the board's account ultimately goes back to the town. It is never seen year over year. We're required by statutes or law to move that to the town. So in essence, becomes funds that go back to taxpayers based on how town administration chooses to deploy those reserves that we sent back. So, you know, to unpack your position and your understanding of what happens with those surpluses, there's also an analysis that can be applied to this, leveraging how the minimum budget requirement may result in year-end balances. But I think at this point, based on the way you described it, your understanding of this is probably misplaced.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Wiltzy?
I just had three points for our audience and for people interested in learning a little bit more about some of the things that we're talking about. When Mr. Hendrick talks about surpluses, these surpluses came during a pandemic when our children were remote learning, when our utilities were not being spent. Our buildings were closed. We had lack of teachers. We had overfilled classrooms when we returned. And all of those dollars, like Dr. Sunday said, went back to the town. We never saw any surplus and it's not in a hidden account. Operating expenses are what we budget for, what we need to run our school system, grant funding or programmatic. Two very different things, two ways of spending money. And last but certainly not least, a little bit of homework. We need everyone to pay attention to the difference in the definition of supplanting and supplementing. Two very, very different words to be used when you're creating a budget to run a school system. Supplanting and supplementing. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. The surpluses I'm talking about have been over the last eight years, not the last two.
I would go back. And maybe, may I ask Ms. Mangini, I hate to put you on the spot, would you always sum it up in a way that I can understand about our surpluses and budgeting and with your grocery store story? Tell that for us.
Even without the grocery store story, I think it's very important to help the public in particular understand that everything Board of Education does with regard to its finances is governed by state statute. You are an entity under the State Board of Education, though you do work under the town government. We have gone back. I don't have the information in front of me right now, but we have gone back and provided information on year-end balances for at least the last six or seven years. There were a couple of years when we probably had, I don't know from memory, maybe $80,000. We had a year when we had absolutely nothing remaining in the last five years. The majority of the year-end balances, of course, as Mrs. Wiltzy just pointed out, were during COVID. And quite frankly and respectfully to Mr. Hendrick truly is that I don't know who can feel that budgeting based on actuals from the year prior is the way to set a budget. However, having said that, you certainly review those actuals to establish historical data to determine, should you have an increase in that line item. There's so many variables and so much work that goes into developing this budget. And honestly, it is irresponsible to budget, to set a budget and bring it to you, who cannot statutorily end up in deficit in your budget, and bring it to you with misinformation, perhaps telling you, well, yeah, you don't have to budget for all those CIAs. It's fine, we'll find money somewhere. In good conscience, that is not what people who are school business officials would ever recommend. And so for a variety of reasons, I do think that we do a really good job at bringing a budget to you. I think you, as board members, are so caring about this district. And I mean that sincerely. I've seen it for the past three years. Every single one of you, you may approach things differently. But I know at the heart of it, you care about our children and our community and you're trying to do what's right. I will tell you, as Dr. O'Sunday has said, I think he presented a very strong budget, what's going to happen after it gets through the board. No one knows yet, of course. And we may be making some really tough decisions in the next couple of months, which will be sad because each time we go forward, and I'll be perfectly blunt. This is the first district I've ever been with where I've had so many personnel reductions. I've never seen anything like this. So I am excited about putting this budget forward that's a reasonable amount, a reasonable request, and has some really good new initiatives in it. So I know that's a little bit wordy. I apologize. But I will provide, once again, the information on the year-end balances that we have had. I know I've shared it with, might have been before, some of our newer board members are on, but I will share that again.
Any other discussion?
You know, just another thing I'd like to point out. If you are looking at the asks that boards of education in our area are asking of their towns, we are the lowest ask in the area. The lowest, with no cuts and adding proposed positions that are targeting all of the areas that we as a board have brought up as concerns or our staff and our administration have brought up as concerns in areas that they feel they need more assistance, right? One of the main things I've heard over the last year is, we need to bring our scores up. We're now in Alliance District. We need more safety in our schools.[1610.64]
We need more safety in our schools, we need more discipline, we need more this. All of these targeted positions that are being added are things to help improve those areas, adding tutors, adding deans, adding counselors, adding tutor. Like, all of these are to help us get out of Alliance, to help us grow as a district with an ask that's less than anyone.
But if we can't maintain that going forward, then we have a bigger problem.
I absolutely agree with that. I think that was also the caution that was made a few years back. So, you know, my plug is to exactly your point. Ms. Bedell is, in order to maintain that or to find efficiencies as we enter or approach that fiscal year, we have to have authentic and open communication with the town. There is absolutely no way to avoid it. In fiscal year 25, we will need the town as much as they will need the board, okay? So there has to be that synergistic relationship, and it has to be organic, and it has to be authentic.
Further discussion? Okay. Seeing then, we will have a roll call vote on a motion on the table. I will start with Ms. Kupi. Ms. Wiltzy?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Bedell?
No.
Mr. Henrik?
No.
And the chair votes yes, the motion passes for three. And might I just take a minute to thank our finance committee for all of its hard work and to thank Dr. Sunday, all of his administrators, Mrs. Mangini, Mrs. Nicholson, and just, I'm gonna leave out a million names, but thank you everybody for all of your hard work, especially over this past month. I know that this is my fourth and final budget for the Board of Education, and I feel really hopeful about it, so thank you all so much. We will move on to tabled items. Would anybody like to take anything off? Okay. We shall move on to committee assignments and reports. There is no update on the renaming committee at the moment, curriculum committee. Ms. Carol Fabian, you met February 21st.
We did, we met February 21st, I'm sorry. We met February 21st. We were presented with the overnight field trip where Stratford High School's National Jazz Fest, are attending the National Jazz Festival in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They will have the opportunity to perform as well as experience other jazz musicians and concerts. We also discussed the proposal to set the first steps in the music curriculum revision for the K through 12 and all of the various opportunities and classes that we offer, whether it's through general music, instrumental, chorus, band, exploring music, AP music theory, like, just the whole entire curriculum K through 12. And then we also were presented with the UConn Seminar and Studio in Academic Writing and Multimodal Composition ECE that we just approved this evening.
Great. Thank you. And, Ms. Kennedy, anything else? Ms. Kupi? Anything else to add? Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to our finance committee. We had a bunch of budget workshops as well as our meeting prior to this. Mrs. Wiltzy, anything to?
Just that we did spend a lot of time together in February, on the 6th, the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd. I too want to reiterate the thanks for all the administrators and the time that you invested in this budget and for all of the questions you put up with, all the challenges we gave you, and for all the answers and for all the solutions for where we'd like to see our district move. One noted correction is that our finance committee meeting was held March 1st, which was before this meeting, not on February 27th. And our next meeting will be March 27th at 6:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiltzy. School plan planning, that February 2nd, 2023. Ms. Kupi, do you have an update for us?
Sure. We had a great discussion as a group, sort of going through our responsibilities and kind of processes here in the district, you know, identifying some of the areas where things that we should be doing were bypassing the committee. And so we've sort of, we talked in great depth about kind of bringing some of those things back to the committee, making sure the committee is allowed to do its work. Tomorrow, we also have a presentation from Durham. It's informational, you're all invited, where they're gonna sort of run us through their roadmap and plan to meet the state's recent law to get to zero emissions within a few years. So that presentation will be through the Plan and Planning Committee. And again, you know, you're all invited, we hope to see you there.
Wonderful. Great. Mr. Henrik, any?
No, nothing added. Ms. Kupi's been taking the leadership reins over there, running it well.
Super, thanks. Liaison committee did not meet this month, correct? Okay. Actually, I'm gonna ask a question, but you may. Since we did not meet as a liaison committee, we didn't get an opportunity to speak with the town counselors that serve on that. I was wondering though, I know you had, Dr. Sunday, you had emailed the town counselors with the proposed itemized budget and offered to sit down with them or go through it with them. I didn't know if anybody else had taken you up on that offer.
None at this time, but we have a few more weeks left before the work, you know, before a decision has to be made. We have some outstanding leaders in the town council, so I'm sure to the extent that people's schedules align, they'll reach out. We'll sit down with them, we'll explain the board's objectives, the board's goals, and provide justifiable rationale for why we're asking, for what we're asking.
Thank you. Policy review, Ms. Kupi and Ms. Bedell?
You just presented two policies.
We're gonna bring to you the athletic handbook because they're making some proposed changes to that, so that's, that'll be.
Great. Super exciting. Great, thanks, ladies. Athletic review, Mr. Kennedy did not meet, but we're excited to review your handbook. Moving on to other committees, Ms. Kupi, any CAEBA updates for us?
Advocacy Day is March 8th, so you might see some information come out from CAEBA. We have a lookout for that. I know they've been going through the governor's proposed budgets and things. Some takeaways I've heard is that there, I don't want to misspeak, but there's some adjustment in ECS and there might be some reductions in special aid funding or some. So we're still going through, understanding like what all of those, you know, proposed numbers and budgets mean for us all, right? The other thing, it's not necessarily CAEBA, but I do want to just point it out because CAEBA has also been doing a lot of advocating, you know, to accelerate the ECS and not spread it out for the 10 years. We also advocated for that. I testified, you know, kind of for us in terms of the free meals policy that went into place. I know pretty much the entire board was in support of that. Dr. Sunday, you were out sending your support still, you know? We all wrote that letter, and all districts across the state have been advocating. And it just feels nice that we were advocating for our children for this. Not like it's our doing, but to be part of the decision, you know, going in our favor is really exciting, so.
So, exciting stuff. Thank you very much. CES did not meet last month. I have a meeting tomorrow with them. But I would like to let you guys know that the CES Foundation will be hosting its April Fool's Day fundraising gala, I believe on April Fool's Day. That would make sense, from 6:00 to 9:30 at Blackout Country Club. And the monies raised by the CES Foundation go to support CES educational programs, mini grants, program grants, and all the programs that, you know, help support our district in so many ways as well. So if anybody's interested in attending that, I can get you more information. I'm sure it's gonna be a wonderful evening. Town building needs.
So Ms. Kupi had asked, Mr. Allen was an actual member of Building Needs, to give us a report at our plan planning meetings to keep us updated. We have asked to get a little more about the capital improvement plan. I know there was a note about next month being presented, but just at plan planning, we take a little more active role in the discussions that lead to the Board of Ed's and the town's capital improvement plan.
Super. Thank you. And any other committees that I'm not aware of?
No, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:20.
So moved by Mrs. Wiltzy. Second by Ms. Bedell, all in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you very much, all have a good night.